All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lackawanna City Council meeting for June 1st, 2020. Why don't we begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Would everybody rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands in our hands.
One nation.
Indivisible, everlasting, God.
That's wrong.
Thank you. So why don't we start as we have in the past with our caucus? And looking at tonight's agenda, items with roll call hearings from citizens, approval of minutes and departmental reports are all ministerial. So we'll start with item number two from the Director of Development requesting we approve a resolution for a temporary ordinance to address the zoning requirements for outdoor eating facilities for our restaurants. Does anyone want to be heard on that or is Director Stanton around? He just want to comment on that? Rich?
Yep, I can give you an overview. We're kind of anticipating tomorrow. Army? We are kind of anticipating tomorrow or shortly thereafter, New York State will enter Phase Two on the lifting of the restrictions. Under Phase Two, the guidelines came out last week for retail and capacity essentially. We're also going to be severely limited by indoor capacity. Seat apart minimally. They're going to probably be around 50% capacity, but it's going to vary from restaurant to restaurant. There's a concern that businesses after they finally pause are going to be having a hard time surviving. This is intended to allow four directors to sign off on an expedited process for getting both restaurants and perhaps retail either adjacent to their building and even into the sidewalk in certain instances. For directors is public safety to make sure the streets have enough passage room. We're also going to comply with handicap requirements for fire access and also engineering. So it would be a four department head sign off, an expedited process, so it wouldn't have to go through site plans. So it'll save them about 30 days, 30 days or so in getting back up and running. It's also set to expire automatically. It's a temporary process. So the, the patios would have to be pulled up by November 15th. They have to stop using them by November 1st. And our power is also sunset under the ordinance.
Thank you, Richard. Have you spoke to the other department heads in question?
Each and every one, I believe. I'm looking at John, I'm looking at Tony, and I spoke to fire with them. So yes.
And was their response positive?
Yes, and yes, and yes.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, Richard. I applaud you for that initiative. Anyone have any comment or any questions on, on that item?
So President, if I can just add something here, did you get the email I sent earlier with all the communications from citizens regarding Steel City? I sent, we received seven communications with regards to Rich's resolution in support of, in support of the council approving it. Did you guys get, you should have gotten those via email.
I didn't get it.
Maroni got it.
Sir, I got it.
Okay, because they were sent in a group message. And basically what it is, is the owner of Steel City and several of his employees sent us emails with regards to that agenda item expressing support that the council approved the resolution that Mr. Stanton has proposed. They're under, I don't know what section they're specifically referring to, but the emails I got basically indicated that they're hoping the city approves their reopening. And I just want to make sure there's no confusing as to, confusion as to what this resolution and temporary ordinance covers.
I can, I can address that for you. Everything is still subject to the compliance with the executive orders. There was an executive order, I think 202.6, which is originally what cut them down. Then based opening going on, but they'd still have to comply with the executive orders, even under this.
Well, I personally think it's a good idea. We had discussed it before. Richard made me aware that this was, was coming down the pike and I think it'll help facilitate business and their recovery, hopefully. And then I'm sure Mr. Devisquali did, I might have received that communication. I didn't see it. I didn't open it, so. All the other council members must have gotten theirs. But if it's at all in support, I can certainly understand that. Does anyone else have any other discussion on that?
Yeah, this councilman, sir, I, I just like to say I read all those letters and, and like Jeff said, it made it sound like we're going to approve them to open. And that's not the case. We're just approving added seating outside. And there's two dates here. One, one said September 1st to the 15th and now it's November 1st to the 15th, right, Rick?
It is November 1st is the date the patios would have to stop operating. And November 15th is the day they'd have to be pulled up.
Okay.
Is that reflected in the resolution?
I thought it was, but I don't have the final version in front of me.
Yeah, it is, it is, but also in the beginning of the resolution, it says September 1st.
Okay, so, okay. The intended date, there was a revision, the drafting process, and it got revised in both places.
All right, we'll just make sure the correct one goes through.
Yeah, thanks for your work on this, gentlemen.
Anyone else want to be heard on that? Moving to the next item, we have a request from the Vern Ware Bigger Homes Tenant Council President requesting that a street be cordoned off to allow some of the graduates who live in that area to have access to the street area for a group of photographs, given the fact that they will not have a formal graduation. Any comments on that from anyone? I think we should be accorded to them.
What's the first word, councilman, to think?
I have no problem. I just wanted to make sure. I have no problem with it. I think they're not going to be able to do anything. I think it would be great for them.
Anything we can do to facilitate their day, so to speak. I think we should try to accommodate them. It's up to you. But I would extend my congratulations to them and, and the hopes of a successful future. And a beautiful day to boot on the 5th of June, so.
That's on Alcott, I believe?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and it's only for what, a couple hours, right?
It's three hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, if I could just add something, I realize that, you know, I'm all for this, absolutely. For the graduating class of 2020. But there are other things on this agenda and that I don't, you know, I don't know how anyone else feels about it, but you know, we have to limit what streets we're going to close, when we're going to close, and for what reason.
Yeah, I agree. We'll take up that topic when it comes to that item.
And I can address some of that too.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I just need to know what part of Alcott that they're going to close off, so I can drop barricades off of them.
Yeah, I think.
Well, it's in the letter.
It's in the letter. You'll have to take a look at that, Tony. It's about 150 yards of the street area.
All right, no problem. I'll check into it.
Thank you. All right, communications from citizens. We have several from George Hawley III, from Kimberly Smith, and from Edward Thomas, all addressing the situation at 161 Steelawana Avenue. The letters speak for themselves regarding the out of control situation there at various hours, including hours of the night, public disturbances, public drunkenness, public urination, et cetera. Disturbing the law-abiding citizens that live in that area. Director Wolf, have you, have you any comments on that issue?
Yeah, the police department is monitoring the situation there. We, I talked to the chief today. There's been 11 calls to service, for service, in 2020 alone for 161 Steelawana. And that's in a five-month period. Actually, it's only in a three-month period because the store's been closed due to the pandemic for the last two months. So there's been 11 calls in the first three months of 2020. The Director of Development and the code course or sent me a, sent me a documentation that they wrote a letter to this store on August 8th of 2019. We're operating after hours. And if you go back to 2019, there's probably more than 20 more phone calls to the police department regarding calls for service for that, that area. I can only tell you that it is being monitored by the police department. Chief Packard and his, and his men and women are taking care of the situation. They've, they've stepped up patrols in that area. And more to follow down the road here.
Well, I think a serious look should be taken at their license to operate a, a store there. And if this is all associated with, this activity is associated with the way business is conducted at that store, we should take a look possibly at the next meeting at either suspending their license or setting a date for a hearing to revoke their license. Director Wolf, could you have for us at the next meeting a clear breakdown of the phone calls, the kinds of offensive activity that's taking place? What the police have observed, the number of tickets that were issued and for what reason? And then perhaps we can act on that at the very next meeting so that once the weather starts getting better again, hopefully, we can, we can deal with that properly.
I will get that to you and to the council even before the next meeting, so you can act on it two weeks from now.
I appreciate that. Anyone else have any comments on that topic?
I won't have a comment to the next meeting, whatever about it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Ingram. All right, the next is another letter, another request from Lynn Bader. This is a request to close down Milnor Avenue on July 4th from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a birthday party. And which would include fireworks, apparently. Why don't we start again? Director Wolf, what is your take on this?
I would definitely not be in favor of this for a couple different reasons. If we start, if we open up this can of worms and start closing down streets for birthday parties or just celebrations, I understand that in the past we've shut things down for block parties. Now, I'm not saying that that's not a possibility at some point if there's going to be a block party, but fireworks inside the city, fireworks are illegal to begin with. The liability that comes upon the city with fireworks being let off on Milnor Street and the potential of fire or injury, I, I would be totally against this 100%.
And then the indication and the communication is that it was approved in the past. I can't believe another administration would have done that.
Yeah, and again, I'm not questioning anything that's happened in the past, but looking at this specifically, I just personally, I mean, it's, it's up to the council, so that would be up to you, you folks there, but I would be against that 100%.
Thank you, Director Wolf. Anyone have any comments on that? I'm sure as far as the fire department might be concerned too, if there's an emergency call there and there's kids running all over the place, it's, it could be a difficult situation. This is the request, my take on this is this is a request from one individual on a birthday party, assuming one birthday party. And none of the neighbors have commented on this. I don't know if they accept this kind of conduct or they have in the past. And what it means to residents who are neighbors on the other side of the streets. I'd be inclined to not approve this myself. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion on this. Anyone?
Councilman Moretti here. I believe that was for 4th of July for seven hours they were looking for.
Seven hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I live right up the street from there, Councilman Serdike. And they, they blast fireworks for, you know, two days. Crazy. I'm surprised that nobody's ever got, you know, hurt or fired down there. Maybe they, they got to aim them more at the gas station or something. I don't know, but it's crazy down there.
Well, that's even worse.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve it, that's for sure.
Well, not only that, what, what about the cleanup afterwards? I mean, it's gotta be a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I never heard of them having the street closed down there. I've been living here for 30 some years and I don't, I don't know where you heard that, but I don't think they ever closed the street down.
Yeah, I would be surprised. That was your comment. All right, moving on. Item number seven, Talib Abdullah requests city council approve utilizing a lot across from 609 Ridge Road on June 26th for COVID-19 testing. That's a noble cause. Anyone have any position on that? All right. I would thank Mr. Abdullah for that initiative. And we'll take a vote on that at that time. All right.
Who owns the lot?
I don't know what the lot's talking about, but I have to refer it, I'm sure, for, for review.
That's what my question was. Does the city own that lot?
Yes, city owns that lot.
Okay.
Oh. So it's the lot between Parkview Towers and, and where the barber shop is on Ridge Road.
Oh, yeah, Park, yeah, yeah, okay.
Hey, Brian, is that your dog drinking water?
That's why I'm outside to avoid these sort of audio difficulties.
It's okay.
I see a couple other big dog owners on the screen here, or at least one. I know where I'm, I'm thinking, hi there. I didn't want to point you.
Anybody in the country got dogs bigger than yours?
It's quite all right.
Going off the rails, guys. It's going off the rails. Let's bring it back on.
Oh, thanks, Officer Wolf.
Who needs the president's authority when we've got John Wolf? Thank you, buddy.
And he carries, apparently. All right, going to the table item, this is a, it would be a request to remove the table item regarding the adopting or not adopting of the ordinance regarding the mayor I follow's proposed budget for 2020 and 2021. Does anyone have any comments on that?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, what, what does the controller think about this budget? Is she in favor? Is she going to, she? Controller?
Carolyn?
Yep, no, I'm, I'm here. I was just waiting for him to finish. I had been on the phone with other municipalities. I've been on the phone with the Erie County Comptroller's Office just to verify, verifying amounts and going by their guidance. I think it's a pretty good solid budget. I'm very confident in our, in our revenue numbers. But there was a lot of work and a lot of thought, a lot of input put in this. I think it, I think it's a very good budget.
Thank you. And this is the same budget that the mayor submitted us May 8th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that item?
Yes, could I add one more thing, Mr. President?
Sure, Councilman Serdike.
Like I stated at the May 18th meeting, I feel the fourth ward homeowners who I represent are going to take the hardest tax hit due to our highest appraisal home values. Therefore, the highest tax bills. I've spoken to many of my fellow neighbors and homeowners and their assessments have all increased substantially, which will cause a major added tax burden to the fourth ward. After much thought, I feel it is in the best interest of the fourth ward residents who I represent to vote no on the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else on that item?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Councilman Ingram?
You know, with this budget, it's difficult. But without doing a budget of this or thinking of the future, it's not just about the fourth ward. It's about the first, second, third, and the future of Lackawana and the businesses of Lackawana. We must do something to change what's been done in the past. Bethlehem still is not here. And the only way we're going to get business to come into the city of Lackawana, they must feel compatible. But we have to think about our children, our children, children. If we do this, what we plan on doing, if we pass this budget, it could open up a whole door for the city of Lackawana. If we don't do it, Lackawana will die a slow death. People I talk to, the business people I talk to, and homeowners I talk to, not just in First Ward, Second Ward or around, you know, they, they want to see Lackawana grow. They're tired of seeing it just standing still. This is planning for the future. And it may hurt for a little bit, but it ain't, but if we do this right, we're planning for the future for our children and their children.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Anyone else? All right. We, we might have an item of old biz. We can take that up at another time unless you care to discuss that now. Now it has to do with the vacant land on Ingram, I believe. Does our law department, Mr. Judah, you have anything further on that?
Yeah, I spoke with the individual who purchased the property and he had expressed interest in turning it into a parking lot because he knows there's an issue with parking for the mosque. I talked to him today. I was of the opinion that that property is about three blocks from the mosque. But he told me if I go down there on the day when there's prayer service, and it's obviously been suspended now because of COVID-19, but he said people park down both of those side streets, so he thinks it would alleviate that problem. So he'd like to at least talk to the city about doing that, at least temporarily. However, he's also indicated a willingness to develop one or more of those lots. If that's what the city desires, so he'd like to have a meeting and discuss that with the city and set up a timetable for doing that. Obviously, our alternative is to bring an action in court and to take the property back. Seeing how the city's main goal is to put the property back in the tax rolls, I suggest we meet with him and give him a reasonable amount of time to at least apply and for and obtain a building permit.
I have, I have something to say about this.
Mr. Egan?
I'm very, I don't like how this was done. I don't like what it was done to. We had people that were going to buy that land. We had people that, homeowners were going to buy that land. I formed, and what that former council did, so he didn't have to, so those people couldn't get it, was wrong. And just to say, okay, we're going to let him, oh, he sold it to him, sold it to, to this gentleman, so he don't do a parking lot. And I am nothing against that gentleman, but I do have that how it's done. How do I look those individuals in the face and say, well, we're going to buy the land, we're going to bid for the land. We didn't get a chance to bid for the land. This is another deal that was done by, by one gentleman that's supposed to be representing us at the time. He sold it. I don't think, I don't think he should have. Now, I don't know legally we can do anything about it, but it stinks. It literally stinks. And I think, and I think the individual that created this chaos should be called, be held accountable for it. I think this is wrong. This is, this is the policy they've been doing for the last 25 years. And this cannot continue. It is not right. And I, the gentleman, I know the gentleman that bought the property, whatever, I've got much respect for him, but I do not like how this is done. This make, this is not fair. It was not done right.
I, I agree with you 100%, but obviously it was before you were here, was before I was here, was before Councilman Moreno was here, Councilman Moretti, most of the councilmen. But in, in any event, we can't do anything against the prior owner. All we can do is take the property back.
Take the property back.
If, if that's what the council votes, obviously they should let your feelings known to the mayor so that she could advise me to move or, or at least, or the council should pass an appropriate resolution. But, but I think we all have to be on the same page here. I, I think we should at least give the opportunity to sit down with him and see what he's got to say. If you want me to do that, if you want to be present, I'll arrange a meeting. And, you know, we've waited this long. Another, you know, two or three weeks isn't going to matter, but I, I think it's valuable property. I think it can be developed. And like I said, I don't know what all the circumstances were before. But I, I think you're right. I think we have to send a message here. But if this man paid money for the property and he's willing to develop it, it, you know, it doesn't matter to me who develops it. I'm just saying, but, you know, that's for the council and the mayor to determine.
Well, I, I, I got a little more to say about that. He paid $3,000 for it. He tried, the gentleman that sold the apartment was trying to sell it to another gentleman for $7,500. $7,500. And we at the council spoke on this, about this. Now, I'm very adamant against this. And I'm a, and I think the individuals that would have had the property, who would have property, he went by what we at the council, you know, he had his attorney and everything there. They was charging him $7,500. We didn't think that was right. We didn't think he was supposed to sell that property.
I remember that.
Okay, so, and then there's other individuals that wanted to buy that property. We got to send a message. And I think the individual that created this should be in court. That's my opinion.
Well, thank you, Councilman Ingram, and thank you, Mr. Judah. Councilman Ingram, there's, there's no way to, to put a good picture or face on this, this problem. It's gone on for a number of years. We're all aware of that. At the very least, what this has instigated, and especially in light of your efforts, Councilman Ingram, the city's adopting a new policy for selling city-owned property and setting conditions for the development of that property with better controls on it. So at the very least, hopefully, this can be prevented in the future. Our goal right now is to, to see the property developed as soon as possible. And if it's not going to be developed as soon as possible, then it needs to be put in other people's hands. Anyone else have any comment on that? All right. Mr. City Clerk, Devisquali, would you call the roll?
Okay, we are officially starting the council meeting for June 1st, 2020. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Serdike.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Department Head Law.
Present.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Comptroller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
All right, hearings from citizens. Now, this is the first meeting that we've had where we did have some correspondence sent in to my email. So just as though they were speaking before the council in this portion, I'm going to read the emails as they were sent to me, as though they're, as though they're reading them before us. So bear with me on this. We have a few of them here, all dealing with the same topic. I'm going to read them in the order they were received. The first one, it says, hello, Jeffrey Lackawanna City Clerk. My name is Mike Martinez, owner of the Steel City Pub. It is my understanding that there will be a vote tonight concerning the reopening of Lackawana Restaurants/Taverns. I am ready to basically beg you to vote in favor of the measure. We are suffering due to the closing and cannot stay in business much longer. Opening for outside seating ahead of the state's schedule will allow us to fight back for our survival. Please help us to survive. Thank you, Mike Martinez, Steel City Pub. We have an email from Janet, I'm sorry, Janelle Reinert. It says, good morning, my name is Janelle Zalkowski, and I am an employee of Steel City Pub. We need to get back to work. More importantly, keep these small businesses open and thriving. We have to find a new normal and get back to our daily lives and routines. I feel with proper protocols and guidelines, we can do this all together as a community. It would be a great start for others to see and follow so we can sustain a future in the business as well as put ourselves on the map as leaders for a better community. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope we can all work together to secure a bright future. God bless. All right, this next one is from Thomas Crellie. He says, hi, my name is Thomas Crellie. I'm emailing you in regards to the reopening of the Steel City Pub. This time has been extremely difficult for me with no work, and we are dying to get back. We need to get back. Please take my opinion in consideration when voting tonight. The next one, Mike Zalkowski. My correction, M. Zalkowski. It says, very, very simply, please open business back up. I work at Steel City Pub and need to return back to work. Then we have one from Nicoloso Squad. We stand in the precipice of lighting the beacon that will begin to open up the world back to normalcy. It is men and women like yourselves who are poised to make a difference. We, the people, have sat in our houses for nearly three months now. For three months, we have watched our local businesses shutter their doors. No one can argue that the coronavirus affected people's lives negatively. This is America, and it was not founded on fear. Time to act is now. Give your constituents the choice to make their own choice. Time to act is now. Give your constituents the choice to make their own choice. Reopen Lackawanna. And we've got, I believe, two more very short ones. Samantha Lopez, to whom I may concern, I'm very, I am very compliant, law-abiding citizen. I have been very patient. However, I would love, I would love it, in these pressing times, to have some sort of grasp on normalcy. I would very much appreciate to return to work. I work at Steel City in the fine town of Lackawanna. By opening this restaurant back up, it would not only benefit the economy, but also the lives of myself and many other fine people working at this establishment. With everything that is taking place in our world today, the good people of Lackawanna could use some good news as such. Thank you for taking time out of your day to read this, and I hope you make the right decision. And that is Samantha Abril Lopez. And lastly, Andy Buchek. My name is Candace Buchek, and I currently work at Steel City Pub on Abbott Road. I'm asking that you vote yes. This establishment is a job I spent years working my way up to, to even be considered an employee. I made it. But long before that, this restaurant has been a place our community could trust for good food at a fair price with clean environment. As a fourth-generation Lackawannian, Buchek Flagafaro Portum Catuzza, in parentheses, generation, my family has lived in this community for 100-plus years. Please vote yes. It is in the community's best interest. Thank you. That concludes any communications from citizens that we received after the agenda deadline but prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk, De Visquale. Morano moves to receive and file, and we thank the individual citizens who took the time and efforts to communicate with us and express their well-thought opinions, so move to receive and file.
Moretti second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file, Citizens Communications. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 18th, 2020.
Morano moves to adopt minutes as written.
Ingram second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt minutes as written. Ingram?
Yes.
Morano, or correction, Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Departmental reports, number one.
Morano moves to receive and file, Departmental Record, number one.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file, Departmental Report One. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Communications from Department Division Heads, number two. Director of Development requests the city council approve the attached resolution authorizing a temporary ordinance to support citywide zoning code amendments.
Morano moves to receive and file, and I act on the resolution.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file, act on resolution. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. The resolution amending section 194-33 of the City Code of the City of Lackawanna to provide a new provision to allow for the temporary issuance of permits for outdoor retail and restaurant space as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Ingram second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Moretti second.
Serdike second.
Okay, so we're all seconding it, okay. Got a motion by, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my own name in there then. We got a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt a resolution as written. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
4-0. Council President, I need someone to make a motion to waive the rules for that item that you had sent me.
I move to waive the rules.
Ingram second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to waive the rules. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
All right, we have a communication from Laverne Ware. Baker Homes Tenant Council President, request the city council approve the closure of Alcott Street west of Olin Lane to Steelawana Avenue, along with the placement of a patrol car on the western corner of Olin Lane and Alcott Street intersection to assist in social distancing requirements for a prom photo shoot event. This event is scheduled for Friday, June 5th, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM until all seniors have had their internal and external photos taken.
Morano moves to approve request, refer to Commissioner DeSantis and Director Wolf.
Ingram second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to approve request, refer to EPW Commissioner and Director of Public Safety. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Communications from citizens. I'm gonna read three communications. They're all very similar before you guys take a vote because it's redundant. Number three, George W. Halsey III Resident, request city council to temporarily revoke the business license of the operation of the store situated at 161 Steelawana Avenue. The following items need to be addressed by the store owner. No social distancing, no masks, drug sales usage in front of business, drug sales used in driveway and rear property, loitering in the front of the building, loud music playing from their cars, garbage thrown on the ground by customers, illegally parked cars on wrong side of the street, and consuming of alcoholic beverages in the front, rear, and driveway of the store. We have a second letter. This was addressed to Councilmember Ingram from Kimberly Smith, resident. She is requesting the councilman's assistance with the store located at 161 Steelawana Avenue for the following reasons. Public urination, empty food containers and trash, and customers entering and exiting the store, blocked driveways, property damage, parked cars with loud music, loitering, broken liquor and beer bottles, and open drug dealing. And lastly, number five, from Mr. Edward Thomas, resident. He emailed Councilman Ingram as well regarding the Lackawanna Express Market. His complaints are similar to those as in communication, resident communications, number two and number three.
Morano moves to receive and file, Citizens Communications, number three, four, and five, and to table the request temporarily to the next city council meeting to, one, get a further informational basis from Director Wolf, and, two, to take an appropriate action at the next council meeting.
Ingram second.
So I have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file, Citizens Communications, number three, four, and five, and to table the request to temporarily revoke the business license pending additional information and a proper response by the city council to be addressed at the next meeting. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0, so that item has been tabled. Item number six, Lynn Bader, resident, request city council approval to close down Milnor Street on Saturday, July 4th, 2020, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a 4th of July slash birthday party as they do every year. The neighbors all come out on their front lawns to socialize, and the kids like to run around between houses to visit. There was a fireworks show in the evening.
Morano moves to die request as submitted.
Ingram second.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to deny request as submitted. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
All right, so that failed. 4-0. Number seven, Talib Z. Abdullah, MSW, Executive Director of Access of Western New York, request city council approval to utilize the lot across from their office, 609 Ridge Road, on Friday, June 26th, 2020, for a mobile COVID-19 testing site.
Morano moves to approve request, refer to Director Wolf.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request, refer to Director of Public Safety. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Table items, Council President.
Morano moves to remove the table item, number 6A, from the regular meeting of May 18th, 2020, regarding the current expense budget of the city of Lackawanna for the fiscal year 2020-2021, and to act upon same.
Ingram second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to remove from the table item 6A, in the regular meeting of May 18th, 2020, the current expense budget of the city of Lackawanna for the fiscal year 2020-2021, and act on same. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
No.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 3 to 1. The associated ordinance, adopting the current expense budget of the city of Lackawanna for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Said fiscal year commencing August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2021, shows a sum of $12,755,844 being the entire amount determined to be necessary to be raised by taxation to defray the expense of the city, and furthermore establishes a unified tax rate of $17.23 of assessed valuation. Additionally, the city clerk, Bean, is hereby directed to forward a copy of this ordinance to the city treasurer, city comptroller, and the city attorney's office.
Morano moves to adopt the ordinance as written. City clerk to forward ordinance as directed herein.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. City clerk to forward ordinance as directed herein. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
No.
Morano?
Mr. City Clerk, please record my vote as an emphatic and resounding yes.
It has been done, sir. Period 3 to 1. Old Business? Are you satisfied with the old business as discussed in the caucus, Council President?
I am. Does anyone have any further comment on it? We will have, we will take further action, and we'll await Mr. Judah's suggested meeting dates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's anything further, Morano moves to adjourn.
Ingram second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adjourn meeting. Ingram?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Serdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Period 4-0. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.